Thank you, Kira. Moving on to the purchase of the Walk-In. Oh, Counselor Hammond, you need to move quicker, sir.
Yeah, well, you know, it's a speed thing. Just before Kira leaves, we could bring this up in open session, but I think that I speak for all of us when we congratulate you on our Mill Street Market, the first one out. It was an awesome night. I know the weather wasn't great, but in any event, the people that were there had a great time, Kira, so thank you. And you're dealing with a great person when you deal with Kira. She was going to leave and we wouldn't have got a chance to say that to her later, so thank you again, Kira.
Thank you, but I certainly couldn't have done it without the support of our Public Works team, who were out there from 6:00 in the morning until midnight, and engineering, and really it was a team effort. Chantel's not here either, so I think that it was so really, it was really wonderful to hear, I'm getting goosebumps talking about it, it was really wonderful to hear the feedback from the community as well about the vision of council and people are really starting to see how it comes together. And I did want to mention that The Grove will be at the subsequent Mill Street Markets as well, so.
Great, just keeps getting better and better, that's fantastic.
We, so thank you, thank you very much, but it's certainly not a one-man show at all.
Great, thank you. Chief, we are talking about the purchase of Walk-In Rescue Fire Apparatus.
Good evening, your worship and council. Tonight before you, we have a report to purchase, a brand-new rescue truck, hopefully lasts another 20 years as the previous one. In 2019, capital budget was approved for $750,000 to look for a rescue. We conducted an RFP. We provided a whole bunch of speculations, requests, and we have a scoring process which is in the report. Proponents were actually given the price. Majority could not meet the costs we wanted.
Really?
They were too high, things we wanted, they could not build it for the price we wanted, so we did have four. One was disqualified due to the electronic process, didn't complete the process. And through our scoring system, we came up with the commercial truck, which is based out of Woodstock. The chassis would be built in either Milwaukee or Florida, brought up to Quebec, the box is built in Quebec, outside Quebec City, and then delivered to Woodstock and then would deliver to us and give us all the training. So, as you know, the rescue truck is basically responds to all our calls, which is almost Carries all our firefighters, our firefighter tools, rescue equipment, and while it's on scene, it's got emergency scene lighting, instant command, and firefighter rehab, so it's going to have an on-ing, off-the-side. And a new innovation is a built-in portable toilet with our female firefighter and today's social media. We want to be able to go inside the truck and use the bathroom, and nowadays with everyone with a cellphone camera, they didn't want to take any more chances, so.
Well, it sounds like you could go camping in that thing.
Yeah. So with that cost, also, we have trade-in value. We actually put that in the RFP, and these guys offered the best value for their trade-in value. In our budget, we had $10,000, and they come up, they came with $23,000.
Oh, that's great.
So basically, they'll just walk out the door when we take all our equipment off, and that's all built into the price. So the truck comes in under budget. We have a few things to outfit it once it arrives, the radio equipment and all that, but.
Great.
So I'd be ready to go.
Good for you. Counselor Hammond.
Worship, thank you. I was just thinking that now with an onboard toilet, you'll be spending more time at calls because.
Wow.
Yeah. No, to my question, what chassis are we going to use, chief?
It's Pierce chassis, custom chassis, built out of either Milwaukee or Florida, so.
Thank you.
Anyone else with that? Moved by Counselor Jacobs, seconded by Counselor Dunn, all in favor? And that's carried, thank you, chief. Moving on to 19 John Street/Centennial Park. And that looks like it's Mr. Alex Del Brocco.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, council. The recommendation before you this evening is that the services of R.C. Spencer Associates be retained for the design of the John Street/Centennial Park sewer separation, road reconstruction, and beautification in the amount of $112,000 plus applicable taxes. On April 1st, 2019, the municipality received requests for proposals for consulting services for the project, and you can see the project area in Figure 2. In 2018, council approved the Uptown Master Plan prepared by Spencer and Associates in principle as the basis for future infrastructure improvements. And as a first step, the program Mill Street West is now reconstructed. The subject project is another area and a step forward in continuing of the revitalization of the Uptown. In accordance with the master plan, it is also a high priority in our sewer separation program. Within the Uptown Master Plan, Centennial Park and the Leamington Library are identified as important public spaces that serve as gathering places. The proposed reconfiguration of John Street will expand the park area, providing the opportunity to create and improve this public gathering space. Specifically, John Street will become a one-way westbound from Erie to Queen in the parking lot, and John Street from Queens to the United Church will become incorporated as a circulation aisle of the parking lot. On April 1st, the municipality requested proposals for consulting services to complete the design. Two submissions were received and reviewed by administration, and R.C. Spencer submitted the most advantageous proposal and addressed all necessary deliverables. Spencer has completed several projects with the municipality, most recently the reconstruction of Mill Street from Erie to Fox, the Uptown Master Plan, and the Parkdale sewer separation. Spencer proposes to complete the engineering and design for $113,971, including the net HST, and is expected to have tender-ready drawings and documents complete by April 2020. Administration also anticipates the expense of approximately $5,000, including net HST for geotechnical or any legal surveys or survey fees. The 2019 approved budget for this assignment is set at $125,000.
Thank you, Alex. Counsel, start with Counselor Wilkinson.
Thank you, Alex. To me, I think this is about the most exciting part is yet to come here over on John Street. I think this one makes sense, to other people it doesn't. When I talk about this, I get excited about it, but where I find the discussion often goes is I think you should expect a spirited discussion when it comes to the future of the fountain. I don't know how R.C. Spencer plans to attempt to navigate that one. It's just like the tomato, the future of that. Anyway, I think it's long overdue to have that discussion, though I look forward to it. But yeah, I think exciting stuff to come with this portion of the project, the best is still yet to come. Thank you.
I believe Cao would like to speak to that.
The water feature, as we refer to as the fountain, our design person for the library really takes that into high regard as well. To have a water feature in the Uptown is something that is unique. Now, that particular fountain is, I think it's over 50 years old now, if not coming up on 50. And some of the main components are starting to break down. Some of the work that the Public Works Department is doing is rather holding the fountain together through, well, I don't want to say paperclips, but we're finding ways to keep it working. But it is going to need an overhaul of some sort. I suspect that when the plans come, there will be public consultation around the project as a whole. There will be an opportunity at that time to speak to, speak to the fountain amongst other things as well. While we're on it, I'd like to also note that there is accessible parking included in this, in this concept, and that's an important component because this has been an issue that we have long had at the Leamington Library, that there hasn't been that kind of access for people with disabilities for the parking spaces. So I'm also wanting to point that out to council that we are taking this opportunity to try and, and address that issue. But I think the answer to Counselor Wilkinson's question or comment is that there will be public consultation once this has been designed, and the fountain will be, will play a part in that.
Okay, moving on to Counselor Jacobs.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I like the concept, I think it's good, and I think it adds to the progress that we want to make in the downtown area. However, I have concerns about one-way on John Street. To me, if you cut that one back, you're really creating a long way around to navigate the downtown area, and I hope that's going to come into some discussion before any final decisions are made at that one-way.
Through you, Madam Mayor, Counselor Jacobs. From the Uptown Master Plan and the discussions that we've had with the engineer, I want to start by saying actually that tonight is not really to discuss the alignment or the closure or the changes to the parking lot. Tonight is to appoint an engineer so we can come up with these and finalize these designs to get something to present to an open house to the affected residents, to the community about what we're planning. Changing a line on a page to make that road wider, to make it a two-way is very simple to do at this point. But further to that, the traffic operations in that intersection are congested right now. John Street at Erie Street North, where am I at here? At Erie Street North, and as a result, eastbound, John Street traffic is currently restricted to right turns only. This right turn movement often becomes congested because of queues which develop for southbound Erie Street South from the traffic signal at Talbot Street. So it's already difficult to get in and out of there right now. So we're trying to maintain access to the parking lot from Erie Street. So in doing that, we're making it one-way in, the cars won't be able to go out, but they'll still be able to access the parking lot. It was recommended in the Uptown Master Plan that that, that movement still, is still maintained. The fact that the only one lane is now required for traffic, we can actually use the southbound parking, or the south parking lane on John Street, and we can expand that park and recapture some green space lost from the expansion of the library, add more green space to the Uptown, and, you know, so there's opportunities to expand our parks and to expand some green space, get some spots for residents to sit and enjoy, read a book from the library. So these are all thoughts that were put in as part of the master plan, so again, just moving on, that this is a concept that we threw in the report to show the potential of what could happen there. I don't anticipate the actual design or the final design of the park looking like this. For one, the building is different now, so it, we're going to need to do something for sure there, but again, one-way, two-way, it can be discussed.
Further.
I appreciate your comments, Alex, and, you know, and again, we're really moving forward with the beautification of the downtown area, but I really have a concern about that one-way street, and I would hope that that would come back to council before any final decisions are made or in the planning stages for that, so that we could work around that. But that's my opinion, I don't know how the rest of council feels about that, but I have a concern. Thank you very much, Alex, appreciate it. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Did you want to speak to that?
I just wanted to support Alex's view. So for example, if you're, if you move down a couple of pages on the report, you'll see the John Street parking lot and Queen Street. So what we didn't include here are some of the conceptual ideas about what might be done with Queen Street, which, which may be to widen the sidewalk on the east side, reduce it to one lane of traffic, put in some parking only on the other side. The reason I'm raising that is because, as similar to the, the concept that you saw earlier that is causing some consternation about the one-way on John Street, that is not a final product, as this is not a final product. So there will be ample opportunity for both the public and council to give their, their views and concerns about the design that comes out of the engineers that are appointed this project. And as Alex said, that's what tonight is really about, it's just appointing the project to the engineers, and then they will be able to go back and design it around the general ideas that we have within the Uptown Master Plan that was approved by council previously.
Thank you. Counselor Thiessen.
I appreciate those comments. I just hate to get into, get the, the design insofar that it's, it's a final design that's being proposed before the public and the council has a chance to, to discuss it, because once you get that far and you've got thousands of dollars invested, then it's going to, you're going to say, well, we're going to have to do it because we've got so many thousands, we don't want to go back and re-engineer the whole thing. I mean, there's a number of design issues that I see, one being the bump outs on Erie Street, and I, and I know it's been told to me that, well, we're trying to narrow it up, slow people down, keep the trucks out of the downtown, but remember, there's still businesses that need to get downtown, or, sorry, there's trucks that need to get downtown to businesses. So there's, there's some things here that I, I have to take, or I have some issues with. The other, with John Street being just a one-way to the west, it's going to push the traffic either down by Canadian Tire and the Baptist Church and plug that intersection, or you're going to go down Clark Street by the Old Blondies, and that's a nightmare to get out there because you can't see north. The more ways that you can get out of that Queen Street parking lot, I still, I still think is better. But there's a number of design things, we'll wait for the next design, hopefully it's a preliminary design, and it's not, it hasn't gone so far that we spent too much money on it.
I have Counselor Dunn.
Through you, Madam Mayor. The only thing, and I understand that we're going to come back, but with the Masonic Hall, is the driveway, you have handicap in the driveway that's going there. We put up handicap before and had to take signs down and move the handicaps so they have the driveway access. So just one thing to make sure you note to the engineers.
Yeah, so the, through you, Madam Mayor, the accessible spaces that are shown on that concept would remain in some shape or form, and you'll notice that with the closure of John Street or the narrowing of that driveline, you'll see we've also added three accessible spaces on Erie Street. So currently, right now, that's, that space can't be designated parking because the vehicle making the right-hand turn off of John won't be able to see. So they're, they're in a sightline if there's a car parked there. So without, with eliminating that traffic movement, we can fill those parking spaces in, so we, we're actually adding five accessible spaces with this concept. So if you change the layout of the park, the parking spaces will remain in some shape or form. So we're adding more parking spaces for assessable, or accessibility issues.
Deputy Mayor.
Thank you, Worthy Mayor, and along with Counselor Thiessen, before you get too far in, I just hope that the Crave, I don't know, I'm just trying to visualize their, their eating establishment outside, that's going to be in the first lane of traffic, or is that bump out, ball boat going to be wide enough to accommodate them in front of their store? I know it's, it's premature, but still, you know, there's a lot of room on Mill Street, but I don't think you could set up an eating establishment for a restaurant on Mill Street without impeding on traffic, so I just, just, you know, you can't answer that, but I'll make sure, tell John that or whenever, but I just hope that's put into plan before it gets too far down the road.
Through you, Madam Mayor. Currently, like, this project wouldn't encroach on Erie Street at all. We would be to the, to the curb extent of, of John and Erie. We wouldn't be working out on Erie Street at this point, so any of that temporary patio that the Crave sets up, that would remain and working the same way. When we get to the Erie Street section of the, the Uptown, that would definitely be taken into consideration that, for a ball boat there.
I'm just going to make one comment. I really like the idea of an expanded green area in this, in the Uptown. I received an email from a, I will say developer, for lack of a better word, who is in the process of facilitating several new, rather large businesses locating in the core. One is on the west end, which I believe is about 90 employees. There's a couple coming into Central 33, which add, I believe, another 50 or so. So if we can offer green space for people to come and wander, or come and sit and enjoy the, the center area of our town, I think that's ideal. So many times I used to see, when I had my business, I'd see people from the former Princess Center hopping in their cars and driving down to Erie Street South. Always, it always bothered, bothered me just a little bit, and I realize that they have errands to run and so on, but I think if you've got a welcoming space where people can grab their lunch, or pick up a lunch or a drink at a local establishment, that's, that continues to build your core, just by the simple fact that there's bodies walking around and engaging. So, so to me, to have a bigger green space, I think, is, is really nice. It also will provide for our guest workers when they're here on, on Sundays. We've talked at length about creating a piazza, and this is another one of those piazza spots where people can sit and interact and engage, and I think that, I believe it shows that we're, we're thinking for the future, we're also thinking outside of the box, outside of the typical, so I'm not afraid of this. I think this is, shows progressive thinking, commend you on that. And I know the recommendation is really about just choosing the consultant, we got a little off track. But anyway, the recommendation is that the services of R.C. Spencer be retained for the design of the John Street/Centennial Park, the sewer separation, the road construction, and the beautification. The project's in accordance with the proposal, the original proposal from R.C. Spencer dated back April 18th, 2019, in the amount of $112,000 plus applicable taxes. I will add to that, though, most of us, except you, Counselor Thiessen, have, have seen those original, were, were involved with, and we had input into those original designs and the concept in the Uptown Master Plan. So, so for some of us, for most of us, this isn't new, so appreciate your comments. Okay, with that, I would entertain a motion. Moved by Counselor Wilkinson, seconded by Counselor Hammond, all in favor? And that's carried, thanks, Alex. Oh, he's staying. Alex, you're staying.
I'm staying.
It's one of those news-to-me things. Okay. Alex, we have the Seacliff Drive East, the Cherry Lane to Regatta Engineering Services.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So for this report, it is also recommended that R.C. Spencer Associates be retained for the design of Seacliff Drive from Cherry Lane to Regatta in the amount of $103,180 plus taxes. The 2019 capital budget document presents a longer-term plan to address current and future needs in the Seacliff East Corridor. The first is an engineering assignment in 2019 for the design of Seacliff Drive between Cherry Lane and Regatta, including the traffic signal at Cherry Lane, storm drainage easterly to the Selkirk Drain, construction of the traffic signal, and minor road improvements at Cherry Lane and Seacliff Drive in 2020, and the reconstruction of Seacliff Drive East between Cherry Lane and Regatta in 2021, complete with sidewalks, lighting, storm drainage to the Selkirk Drain. On April 3rd, 2019, we received requests, we requested proposals for the consulting services to complete the design of Seacliff Drive. The, the project area is shown in Figure 1. This was identified as Phase 1 in the Seacliff Drive East Environmental Study Report prepared by Stantech Consulting in 2012. This project would see the construction of an improved urban cross-section with sidewalks, bike lanes, a center two-way left-turn lane, storm sewers, and street lighting. Two submissions were received and reviewed by administration. R.C. Spencer submitted the most advantageous proposal and addressed all necessary deliverables. Spencer has completed several projects within the municipality and has performed well. Spencer proposes to complete the engineering preparation of contract drawings and specifications by April 2020 for $104,996, including net tax. Administration also anticipates the expenditure of approximately $8,000, including net HST and geotechnical and legal survey fees. The 2019 budget approved for this assignment was set for $175,000.
Thank you, Alex. Counselor Wilkinson.
Thank you, Worship. Alex, I'm just wondering why we stopped? It's a hard stop right there on the east end. Why didn't we at least go down to the intersection at the Bevel Line? Because that, that portion there is really treacherous. I remember from biking out with my own family. I thought you would have gone down to the Bevel Line at that point.
Through you, Madam Mayor. The, the EA of the study area for, in 2012, designed by, presented by Stantech showed that as the hard division line of the, the two projects. Is there potential to move? I'm, I'm sure we could. However, it's, that's what the EA said.
The only reason I would think that we might want to consider that is, that's an active bike route, and we're putting, we're introducing bike lanes with this as well. So you're pretty much going to be dumping them off onto a, it's, it's road, then it's gravel and big potholes, all that kind of stuff, and that's a busy little stretch and a, a fast runway there for people heading to the point. I think there's a, a chance to make improvements here for our bike trails, active, healthy lifestyle, down to the point, which is always encouraged. So anyway, something to consider.
Counselor?
Yeah.
I think you're forgetting the report from Rob Sharon, from a week ago. I'll have the Cao explain to you the two-step project.
I would just, your, your point is well-taken, and I think that you, that project is being considered right now. So this is, this is the hard stop, but there's more, there's more coming. Let's, let's do it that way.
I have Counselor Thiessen next.
Thank you. Through you, Madam Mayor. Alex, I'm just curious as to the, the procedure for, for awarding these, these tenders or these requests for proposal. The, the name, or the, R.C. Spencer seems to come up a fair bit. Are they always the best? Are there, it's rated? Are they the best price? Are they better in quality? Are they better? At some point, and maybe tonight's not the time, but it, and maybe someday we can sit in your office and you can go through that procedure with me, or maybe you want to explain a little bit of that now, but just curious how that procedure works.
Through you, Madam Mayor. So we, we send out a scope of services, or we send out a blank question that says, this is kind of what we want to do, and this is kind of what we're looking for, give us your best proposal. So the consultants come back to us with a booklet of their proposal, that lists their project team, their project managers, related projects, their schedule, their proposed schedule, any constraints on the job that they can think of right off the, right off the bat, just by looking at it, and then they give us their price. So the price is 20% of the scoring, and the rest is based on the project team, their, their ability to deliver on time and on budget, past experience, related experience. So it's, if you want to stop by my office anytime, I can show you the, the RFP that we sent out, I can show you the, the scoring matrix that we use. More than happy to go through that with you. But, so it's a little bit of everything, and then we have the three project managers, we've all scored these individually. So the RFPs come in, and then I send a sheet out, they score it, and then I call them back. Once I'm done, I call them back, and then we compare. And then we, we choose the best proposal based out of the, the three of us.
That answered your, your question. Counselor Hammond?
Your Worship, thank you. Alex, in your report, you touched on a traffic signal on Cherry Lane and Seacliff. What experiences, good or bad, have we found with the three or the What experiences, good or bad, have we found with the three or the four-way stop that we currently have there now? I've been down there a number of times, it seems like it's working really well. And I just wondered what would move us from that to a traffic signal.
Through you, Madam Mayor. The warrants for the traffic signal are already, we've already met and exceeded them. So the traffic volume heading through that intersection, it already requires a signal. We put that stop sign up as a stop gap to kind of get us through the construction on Erie Street, because now we were taking those ten thousand cars a day that were traveling north-south on Erie Street between Seacliff and Robson. We were sending them to Cherry Lane because the road was closed. So during the busy season in the summer, we had vehicles backed up past Seacliff Park because of that stop sign. With the traffic signal, it will move the traffic more appropriately. It'll let cars on Erie, or on Seacliff Drive clear five, ten at a time, and then change to let the traffic on Cherry Lane clear. So the timing, it'll just allow the traffic to flow faster through the intersection.
Thank you again, Mayor. I realize that we haven't gone to prime-time summer yet, you know, where people are heading to the point to find out how good that three- or four-way stop is, but right now, as of, even today, I was down there twice. It's working really well. I mean, people are courteous, you know, very courteous in allowing people to move. And I would, well, of course, it's going to be a while before we get on. It'd be nice to at least try to monitor that this summer during peak times and see how good or bad that three-way stop is working. And maybe we could not put a traffic signal there.
Did you want to speak?
Yes, through you, just another follow-up. Now, there is, with the Active Transportation Plan, there is bike lanes coming, there is bike lanes on Cherry Lane, there is a bike path. So this intersection is going to be the kind of the convergence of bike lanes, bike paths, sidewalks. So there is going to be a lot more pedestrian traffic and bike traffic moving through that intersection. So going forward, the three-way stop might not be the best option for that type of traffic.
I have the deputy mayor next.
We're the mayor, thanks, just as the last one there, too. I'm glad we can have input on it after it comes to fruition, but I would like to move the recommendation to get this project going.
Moved by the deputy mayor, seconded by Counselor Wilkinson. Comments, questions, all in favor? And that's carried. Thanks, Alex. They think they have to prompt me now, but I'm just taking a break. I'm pausing. That was a pause, a pregnant pause.
Are you?
No. That ship has sailed, sir. Alex, we're talking about the Erie Street South Storm Sewer Outfall.
So it is the recommendation that the services of Stantech Consulting be retained for the design of the Erie Street Storm Sewer Outfall in the amount of one hundred and fifty-four thousand, five hundred and ten dollars and thirty-two cents plus applicable taxes. The environmental study report prepared by Stantech in twenty thirteen regarding the improvements to the Erie Street South Storm Sewer Outfall recommended that the following, following the necessary sewer separations, the outfall should be relocated to the east side of the ferry dock terminal. Currently, the Erie Street South Storm Sewer outlets into the Seacliff Park beach area along the west side of the Leamington Pedestrian Pier. The west side of the pier experiences significant sand accretion, and relocating the outfall will preserve the proper functioning of the sewer well into the future. So the sand moves from the west to the east, and it kind of plugs up our diffusers in the outfall there. With completion of the Erie South Conover Stewart Forest Reconstruction in twenty eighteen, the sewer systems are now fully separated, and the outfall can be relocated. While the five-year capital plan does not include this construction project, administration is of the opinion that the design aspects of this project should be completed, thus making the project shovel-ready. Given the waterfront location of the subject area, there may be an opportunity to incorporate the work in conjunction with waterfront redevelopment work, or to have the project ready for possible future grant funding opportunities. On April eighth, the municipality requests proposals for consulting services to complete this design. So you can see the project area in Figure One. Generally, the project would see construction of approximately one hundred and seventy meters of storm sewer, along with the installation of a water quality unit to remove fifty to seventy-five percent of sediment and oil prior to discharge into the environment. One submission was received and reviewed by administration. The proposal provided by Stantech Consulting addressed all necessary deliverables, project team work plan, schedule, and quality control. Stantech Consulting has completed several projects within the municipality in the past and has performed well, most recently the North Leamington Master Drainage Study, Erie South Storm Sewer Outfall upgrades, and the Sturgeon Meadows Pond retrofit. Stantech Consulting proposes to complete the engineering preparation of contract drawings and specifications by April twenty twenty for one hundred and fifty-seven thousand dollars, two hundred, one hundred and fifty-seven, two hundred and thirty, one hundred and fifty-seven thousand, two hundred and thirty dollars, including net HST. Administration also anticipates the expenditure of approximately five thousand dollars in geotechnical and legal surveys. The twenty nineteen budget approved for this assignment was set at a hundred thousand dollars. The total estimated cost of the project is now a hundred and sixty-two thousand. Administration recommends that the sixty-two thousand, two hundred and thirty-dollar difference be funded from the infrastructure reserve, which was budgeted to have a twenty nineteen year-end balance of two million, three hundred and ninety thousand. Alternatively, administration may recommend canceling the project and planning the work in future years with an updated budget value.
Thank you, Alex. Mr. Neufeld.
Actually, it's a question I'm going to impose to Alex, and then I'll probably pick up on it. Alex, in the, under the heading of background, the second paragraph, the first sentence, says, "With the completion of Erie South Conover Stewart Forest Reconstruction Project last year, the sewer systems are now separated and the outfall can be relocated." What's the significance of the systems now being separated, and how does that affect the outflow?
Through you, Madam Mayor. The significance is now there is no sanitary overflows connected into that pump station or to bypass that sanitary pumping station. So that entire area, any water that falls on the road goes to the outfall. Any water that is discharged from the home, or the toilets, or the sanitary waste from the homes, goes to the pump station. So there's, with the last few rain events, since the sewers have been separated, that pump from PCC is telling me that there is not a lick of rainwater getting in there. It's operating as normal as it should. So it's, the water is, it's clean water, there's, you know, debris from the road and whatnot, but that's why we wanted to put in the water quality unit. So discharging that into the marina, it's a lot easier to swallow to discharge this type of water into the marina than it is prior to the separation.
Thanks, Alex. So you see, the reason I wanted Alex to highlight that a little bit is, we so quickly glazed over the environmental impacts that our projects have. And for, a little over four and a half years, four and a half years ago at our strategic plan, the council of the day, and all of you were there, but Counselor Thiessen, said we need to look at our engineering projects through the eye of environmental concerns. I think specifically what council said is, we want to have a green consideration when we look at these projects. I think it's important from time to time to stop and identify those projects that we've completed that have done exactly that. If you think about what we're trying to do at our waterfront, to create a destination for our residents as well as visitors, how do you condone the discharge of partially septic, partially septic discharge into the water at the beach where we're trying to entice people to come and enjoy themselves? So I just wanted to take a minute to give some evidence or an example of the kinds of environmentally conscious things that we are doing in keeping with our strategy, that is tourism, but as well as a direction from council, to consider the environment when we choose our projects.
Not to rain on anyone's parade, but if there's, if there's water from the road still coming out into that outfall, so there'd be salt and oil and debris like that, I'm assuming, also people fertilizing or putting, that still goes into that outfall, right? So then further to that, people fish on that side of the dock there. Will that impact the fishing at all there?
Well, with the water, with the water quali, I can't say that. Water quality unit, that takes out fifty to seventy-five percent of that, the road debris, the salt would all settle out in this
Good.
chamber or multiple chambers to filter that water. So it kind of semi cleans it as it goes into the marina.
Right. Okay, that's good to know. Thanks, Alex. Anyone else from council? Counselor Jacobs?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The last sentence on the report, "Administration recommends canceling the project and planning the work in the future years with updated budget value." Does that mean you want to take it off for now? And I'm wondering, as you're mentioning before, because the migration of sand picking up on the west side of the dock, that outfall discharge pipe, I guess, just about at the limit, is filling in constantly, I presume. So why would we delay this, ensuring that pipe stays open? I guess, maybe you can link me on that one, if you don't mind.
Through you, Madam Mayor. It was a alternative that we wanted to give council the option to make the decision, either take the money from reserves and let us move forward with the project, would be our first request, I guess. Secondly, if council didn't want to pull the money from reserves and move forward with the project, then we would cancel it and go through the RFP process again after sitting down the next budget season and saying, okay, well, we need more money to do this. So we need to increase this budget and then start the whole process over again. So I'm going to ask that we pull the money from reserves and continue with the project and move ahead. But we did write that in to the financial impact as an alternative, so I just wanted to make sure that, you know, I wanted to say that so council was aware that that is an alternative that we could do.
Thank you, Alex. Is there a financial impact now with the, with the levels of the sand and these storms and everything else? That pipe's plugging, is it, is there a cost associated with maintaining to keep it open, or is it open on its own? Or I guess what I'm looking at, what would it cost us per year just to maintain that pipe as it stands today?
Through you, Madam Mayor. I'm not sure what it would cost to keep that pipe open. I know we did do an extensive cleaning of that pipe a few years back. I don't recall the number off the top of my head, and I would hate to guess at it. I can find that number and come back to you, but in two thousand and twelve, I believe, when we put the new diffusers on it, we did some extensive cleaning there. That was, that project was, I want to say, was around two hundred thousand dollars to put the new diffusers, to clean the pipe. I don't want to say that they're not functioning at a hundred percent, because I don't know, because I can't see under the water or under the sand that's on top of them, but I would say that they're not functioning at a hundred percent because they are buried under the sand, and there's not a whole lot of water left on top of them as it stands right now. So we need to kind of get ready to do something, and I, the ultimate goal is to move it into the marina, so I would say let's push ahead with moving it into the marina. And if we do have to do something major there, either if we can't find the money to actually do the construction, then we would look into something for a cleaning procedure.
You're welcome. Counselor Dunn? Moving the recommendations, seconded by Counselor Hammond. Did you want to speak to it? Yes.
So what is the, what is the, I guess I'm looking for, how important is this compared to other projects that maybe are out there that are environmental in nature, that are maybe more important than this currently? I get that, I get that it needs to be done, it's going to have to be done at some point. If it's functioning, and it's functioning fine, if maybe it takes a little cleaning every eight to ten years, is that still cheaper than moving it right now until we know we can get funding to do this? Are there other projects that we know we could get funding for, sewer projects or waterline projects or something else?
Through you, Madam Mayor. A lot of the funding projects for infrastructure work are reliant on a shovel-ready project. They want something that's sitting on a shelf, that's ready to go, ready for construction. So the design and construct in the same year, getting the proper approvals, getting the proper permits from the various ministries often take more than six, eight months to get. So that, if we would start a design May, April, we don't have approvals till November, and then we can't work in November, so now we have to wait till the following year. And then a lot of the funding, it's March thirty-first of the following year. So it's, it's really tough to get a project like this funded and built within the same, with the funding constraints of the timing of most of the funding projects.
Motion's on the floor, all in favor? And that's carried. Thank you, Alex. Moving on to the economic adjustment and salary review, and that is Mr. Neufeld.
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. Generally, when I give a report, I speak away from the notes, but tonight I'm going to stay fairly closely to the report because there is a lot of important information and nuances within the report, and it creates an explanation not only for council, but for the people who are watching at home. So the background for this report is that in twenty thirteen, the council of the day adopted a salary administration program, and it was prepared by McDowell Associates. The system is designed to ensure pay equity compliance and program, the program has established the process by which salaries for non-union employee groups are administered. So back in twenty seventeen, there was a salary review using the tool, the McDowell Job Evaluation System, which was done by the consultant. And the consultant at the time, Marion Love, reviewed and evaluated job descriptions that had been revised, but not formally reviewed since twenty twelve. She also compared jobs at the municipality to similar positions in comparator organizations, and she performed market analysis on twenty-seven rates, sorry, twenty seventeen rates based on that review. Now, the proposed salary grid developed by Ms. Love at that time recommended annual salaries at the fiftieth percentile, median of the market. Now, there are municipalities, even within Essex County, who have chosen to go at higher percentiles, but that, we, the recommendation here is to remain at the fiftieth percentile. There are ten municipal comparators included in the market analysis based on the geographic location, and we looked at similar services and similar alignments and size. So the market analysis that was done suggested that an adjustment to certain pay bands within the system approved in twenty thirteen required, certain pay bands was required, changes were required as those pay bands were low as those pay bands were lower than the compared market. So the market analysis determined that specifically, pay bands two, three, four, six, seven, and nine required adjustments in order for the municipality of Leamington to remain competitive with their comparators. At the time, in January of 2018, council heard the report but only approved the 2% economic adjustment at the time. Council suggested, though, that the proposed salary grid be brought back for consideration at a later date. I think at the time, the comment was bring it back in a year or so, and that is why this is back in front of council today. So the proposed 2019 salary grid and economic adjustment is being proposed so to ensure that the salary grid is competitive within the markets and help the municipality attract and retain talented human resources. I'm going to stop there just for a second because just within the last three months or so, the municipality of Leamington has been attempting to recruit to some fairly crucial positions within the municipality. And we have been having some great difficulty even attracting resumes of qualified individuals. So the proposed 2019 salary grid is attached to this report as a appendix one, and we'll get there in a second. And it is the same, exactly the same grid as proposed in 2018, adjusted to include the 2018 economic adjustment of 2% increase for 2019. So in keeping with the municipality's pay policy, economic adjustments are considered, to be considered annually by council in connection with full-time, non-union staff and other police, other boards and services like the Police Services Board and the Committee of Adjustment and Union Water, Joint Board of Management, part-time and student employees. So given consideration to the Consumer Price Index for 2018, as well as negotiated settlements with unionized employees and the financial impact against budgetary constraints, a 2% economic adjustment is considered appropriate for 2019. So in 2013, we established this program, but that program needs to be maintained. And in accordance with the pay policy, for example, if a new position is created within the municipality, the responsibilities for the employee's position are, or the responsibilities for an employee's position is altered from the time the job was last evaluated and assigned to a pay band within the salary grid, a position may be reevaluated by a rating committee. New one is evaluated by the committee, and current ones can be reevaluated if there are changes, and what we mean by that are significant changes, to a current job. The pay policy identifies that the members of the rating committee, and this is for maintenance, are the CAO, the four directors, and the manager of human resources, all of whom have been trained on the McDowell Job Evaluation System. And that was the tool that was identified and approved by council. So along with the 2% economic adjustment, this year, I'm recommending some benefit improvements to our non-union staff. The benefit improvements have been included in recently negotiated collective agreements as well, and the cost of the proposed changes to the benefits would be approximately $10,000 were included in the 2019 budget. The recommended change to the benefits premiums for full-time, non-union employees are based on employee feedback. So we have a, we have a committee made up of representatives from the non-union staff who meet with our human resources department, and that is the manner in which I receive recommendations from our staff about the sorts of things that they are looking for. The benefits improved, benefits have not been improved for our non-union staff in at least the amount of time that I've been here, which is five years. So the intent of the proposed increase for benefits in premium costs is to keep the associated increase to employee compensation under one, the equivalent of 1%. So a 2% economic increase and less than, right around 1% increase as it relates to benefits. And this is very similar to what has been negotiated with our, with our unionized staff to date through the collective bargaining process. There are a couple of amendments that we need to make. Article B of the pay policy should be removed as it was merely a duplication of what we already have in another section of the compensation for part-time employees. And Article E of the pay policy would also be amended because our older policy, our previous policy or current policy, is pretty specific about what we consider, but there such as cost of living and adjustments given to two of the municipality union groups. But there are other things that we ought to take into consideration. And interestingly enough, in Marion Love's report last year, she also suggested that we want to look at this. It's not a huge change, but it helps make the economic adjustments more reflective of the reality. So we're suggesting that the salary grid be adjusted annually by the cost of living having regard for the following, the average of the comparator group, published survey data, so outside information, bargaining increases, given consideration to what unionized staff are given, and the municipality's ability to pay. So what's the financial impact to this? Well, let's start with making sure that we break this out. 2% increase across the board, the benefits increase, which is cumutively less than the equivalent of 1%. And then there are the adjustments that were recommended last year based on the market survey. So the amount included in the 2019 budget is in connection with the 2% economic adjustment for full-time staff and everybody else, the Committee of Adjustment, council, Police Services Board, Union Water, Joint Board. It all comes to approximately $160,000. The 2019 budget also included funds to phase in the implementation of the adjustment to the salaries. Now, we're talking about the market survey in those bands that I identified earlier. Now that we're at that particular paragraph, I'd like you to look at the second paragraph in the financial impact. I've made an error. And that is, one, two, three, four, five, the sixth line down where it says $97,644, that ought to be $99,567. You'll understand this in just a minute. I wanted to point that out right now because we're going to, I would ask you to turn to appendix one. So it's proposed that the employees whose pay bands are adjusted to be paid at the job step rate within the relevant pay band as set out in the 2019 proposed salary grid. So you can take a look at the appendix one and you'll see in the first grid, it says at the top, 2018 salary grid plus 2%. So that is exactly the salary grid that was provided last year and approved last year in addition with a 2% increase to represent what is being presented today as part of the economic increase. But then we're talking about a change within the bands. So we, the report indicated